Everybody signed in, welcome everyone. Commissioner Malloy is gonna be a little bit late, I suppose. Madam first.
We sit in Nancy Blair Park. I'll take the role. Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Okay. Agenda item one, dispense reading the minutes, the workshop dated August five, twenty twenty five. And the regular meeting dated August six, twenty twenty five. Two, dispense reading in the minutes, special meeting August five, twenty twenty five. Okay, and three, approve bills. Four. Transfer monies submitted by the Trumbull County Auditor. Between the dates of July thirty one, August six, twenty twenty five, as listed. Five, to approve additional appropriations submitted by the county auditor. For the dates of July thirty one through August sixth, twenty twenty five. Six. Through transfer of appropriations submitted by the auditor. Dates of July thirty one to August sixth, twenty twenty five, as listed. Seven, Diane here, anybody from senior? No. Okay. Seven, to adopt the alternative tax budget, oh, I'm sorry, that's not Diane. That's the Budget Commission. To adopt the alternative tax budget of Trumbull County. For the fiscal year beginning January one, one of twenty six, authorize. Myself, Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of the Trumbull County Commissioners. To sign the alternative tax budget. And submit the same to the Trumbull County Budget Commission. Is anybody here from the Budget Commission?
We're here.
Where is Paul? Yeah, you're on the Budget Commission. Kristen, can you speak on this?
Yes, I did send, submitted this. I just sent an email with some explanations. I sent that on Thursday, August seven. The Ohio Rice Code fifty seven oh five twenty eight requires each taxing district to adopt a tax budget for the succeeding fiscal year. That's a very formal policy. There's public hearings, stuff like that. Substitution came out with the Ohio Rice Code fifty seven oh five point twenty one A, which allows the Budget Commission to waive. Tax budget process and require taxing districts to provide a similar information in an alternative format as prescribed by the Budget Commission. So that is, that is what this is that we're submitting. It's for the next fiscal year, so it's for January first, twenty twenty six. It, the purpose, I did say in the email, I just to get your departments and entities ready for the next year, basically. And this was, um. The twenty twenty five alternative tax budget was approved by commissioners on August seventh. This is done annually. All of the information was downloaded from various municipal programs that submitted by the various county departments. And then the email, I listed those projects, but I won't go into them. And then at the bottom, you know, it says the general fund is showing an estimated negative fund balance for twenty twenty six. Now, this is just an estimate based on the June budget level request by all of the general fund departments. This does not mean that this is what their November budget level request will be. Nor does it mean that these amounts are what will be awarded by the commissioners as part of the twenty twenty six annual appropriation resolution. This is just something we have to submit by Ohio Rice Code. And we use the information that's put in by the partners for the June level of budgets. Any questions?
Thank you, Kristen. Any questions, Commissioner? Commissioner, welcome.
Actually, he right, or actually came in second to Raymond, that's pretty bad.
You didn't change your head today, Raymond. Okay. We'll move on to, uh. Agenda item eight. And this is to accept the resignation of Ms. Diana Shimko with regret. As a member of the Senior Services Advisory Council, effective June two, twenty twenty five. So. Just need to vote on it.
We didn't, didn't we do these with Lynn Walsh also? That's how we had over those four seats that were open.
I don't think they were officially put on the agenda.
We didn't vote, we didn't vote on it.
Just to accept the resignations.
Okay.
So that's why we're kind of cleaning it up now.
You sure we didn't have Lynn Walsh on the agenda back in about two months ago? I think we did.
I remember, but did we vote? Let's read them now if we did.
I mean, I'll, I'll look, I'll look at them.
Did you want to comment?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so. We can always amend it if we find that we did vote, but I'm gonna read them anyway, just to make sure that we have them on the agenda. Uh, nine is to accept the resignation of Ms. Lynn Welsh. As a member of the Senior Services Advisory Council, which was effective April four, twenty twenty five. Again, if, if we find that we did, then we'll amend it and take them off. Okay, so Commissioner, did we, did we get it? Oh, did he submit?
Right.
Okay, I'll second that.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
Do you want to vote on that tomorrow?
Yeah. So.
We'll just put it.
Yeah, for ten to be stated.
Sam Lamarcus. Okay, so I'm gonna read it to appoint Sam Lamarcus as a member of the Trumbull County Senior Services Advisory Council. Uh, for a term ending December thirty one of twenty twenty five. And. Eleven. To receive a place on file monthly activities report for the Trumbull County Dog Kennel for the month of July, twenty twenty five. And we have Gary Schaefer, Gary's.
Yeah, for twelve to thirteen, Trumbull County Engineers.
Thank you, Christian. Gary Schaefer, Trumbull County Engineers. Uh, twelve is just to grant the right-of-way firm a cadcan communication, as listed. Thirteen is to grant the special holding firm as steel coils, A W O transport jar transportation. So we've got the next one with the maintenance. Yeah, right. So Daryl, you wanna elaborate on this?
Daryl, done again, uh, facilities. So Harlan and I met Nicole at the county engineer's office yesterday, did a walkthrough. Uh, there are several items on punch lists that are, that's incomplete. So. I would say we take this off until that. That is completed and checked out, we move forward with it.
Okay, I agree. Yeah, I have an issue with that. I don't know, Gary, if you have anything we had to discuss. Now, I'm not following all the punched list items, and I know they didn't come back, they didn't, I think, complete it. Several, but I don't know what all is on the punch list. Okay, so we'll table it. Zachary's vet, Metro Parks.
Yep.
You wanna?
Yeah.
Give us a little idea of what, what we're doing here?
Yeah, fifteen sixteen. So fifteen is the final legislation for base four. I approved the preliminary legislation, uh, last time I was here. This is just to prove the final legislation and provide the local match, which is coming from three grant funds, five hundred thousand dollars, Clean Ohio Trail Fund. Copper appropriation. It's listed as two forty two. We are supposed to get two fifty, but because the ODNR is now taking three percent out of all our state appropriations. It's actually less money we're getting, I think. I'm gonna address with our state that figure out what's going on there. And then again, got a seventy five thousand dollar stakeout appropriation, but we're only getting seventy two thousand seven fifty because. ODNR is taking three percent for M and B's. So the whole local match is going to be covered by, uh, state grants that we receive. And then the other eighty percent is covered by federal money. So it's, you know, zero cost to the general fund for that. And then sixteen is modification number three to the, uh, right-of-way services contract with MS Consultants. The increase is for nine thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars. Um, which increases the contract from hundred twenty seven thousand three twenty one to hundred thirty seven thousand. And four dollars, um, we're going to be providing some local match out of our I ninety-three fund. And the, uh, remainder is coming from our, uh, federal funds. And zero, uh. General funds are requested for that as well.
Ten.
Yes.
Sixteen, I think we have the type of. Sorry, Julie Green, I apologize. Uh, I just saw a missing number, that's all. I have sixteen.
What is it?
It just says seven, um, forty six.
Oh, yes, I see what you're saying.
Oh, they'll get back for you. Lisa.
Okay.
Turn enough that was something I submitted, or maybe. Either way, I'll get it to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Exactly where you're at. What's, uh. We received that correspondence our Commissioner Hernandez did. I don't think all three commissioners did about Colbert Lake. Uh, the dam needs repaired, and they were asking for support from the commissioners. To approve for the Metro Parks to take ownership of Colbert Lake, or?
No, I thought the, from at least what I understood, I thought Hubbard was taking control of the. Uh, acreage there, at least from what I understood, now there could have been a sever letter. And then, uh, there is, if the, from what I understand, that there is a private foundation that is taking control of the dam and doing repairs.
Kristen, well. This has been ongoing for years, but I did receive, you didn't receive that?
I did.
Did you receive any?
I, I think so.
Oh, you did?
I, you, I didn't print it off yet.
Okay, well, while you were omitted, I don't know. The Western, what is, Western?
Reserve.
I think certain.
Conservation.
Yes, my understanding is that they want to purchase. The land and then donate it over to the township. The issue is the dam, which they said that they would have no liability. They would release the liability. Of course, we have trustee.
She's right, right here.
Baker here, um, trustee Baker, you might, this is Monica Baker, she's a per township trustee. Uh, she actually replaced me. So it's a pleasure to have you. Can you give your name, Monica, and just maybe elaborate on what you know?
Sure, Monica Baker, Hubbard Township Trustee, um. Jason, trustee Tedrow has been working with the Western Reserve Land Conservancy and also the. Community Foundation of Western P A and Eastern Ohio. Now, um. My understanding is that, as you just said, the dam is going to be separated. Now, I don't. One of my questions that's still outstanding is, have it, has there been a request made to replat that parcel? The Hubbard Township parcel, so that the dam is a separate. Uh, parcel. And, um. But, uh, that.
Brookfield is also in.
Brookfield, yes, a hundred and forty some acres of the three hundred and thirty eight are in Brookfield Township. And then the remaining, uh, fifty some, which forty some would be, um. What we would be looking at taking without the dam. And the. Conservancy is going to apply for a grant through the Clean Ohio Funds. And, um. And that would end up transferring. The land without the dam, and then. Community Foundation would be applying. Awesome, to get grant money. That is the plan, as I understand it. Um, and if, if Hubbard Township and Brookfield Township. Do not feel that it is something that is manageable or, um, a good move for the townships to be. Uh, managing or, or taking responsibility for. My understanding is that the Conservancy has been communicating with Metro Parks. And that they may. Be a stand-in. Uh, for, once the Conservancy has purchased the land, then it would transfer to. As well, instead of.
One of the issues that I, that I. That, you know, that I understand that the grant, but there's a match to the grant.
There's a twenty-five percent local match.
And that the land value.
That you're being told that because the, um. The appraisal in two thousand nineteen, I believe. Was for one point eight million, or it might have been two point two million. There were two different numbers that. Trustee Tedrow had. Put out there. Um, but the, my understanding is the sale price is for one point three million. Um, to be quite frank, my personal opinion, um. I don't know about you, but equity is one thing, qualified cash in the bank is another. So twenty-five percent local match, based on the equity of the land. Um. Um. The, uh. The resolution that was passed on Thursday, it was in the newspaper and everything, I abstained. So I do have some questions and concerns, um. But, but the low, the twenty-five percent local match, um. Either the equity will stand for it, or. The Conservancy has said that they would be raising the funds. Um, another one of my questions is, I want to see that in writing.
Has Brookfield communicated with you and also agreed to sign off on this?
To my knowledge, they have not.
Um, another question I had, the emails that we received, Commissioner Bernard and I.
We're only, we're only. Excuse me, it, I, I just pulled up the email and it shows that all three of us were supposed to get it. I think it was on August tenth that chose me, that Commissioner Hernandez, Malloy and myself.
Okay.
My understanding is that trustee Tedrow is expecting to be here tomorrow.
Um, it was only signed by trustee Tedrow is, um, the letter.
Okay, yeah, I, I, unless it shows my, I haven't. I mean, I can't check, but.
So basically, the trustees. Tedrow, trustee Tedrow was taking this upon himself without the trustees.
He may be communicating with you, independent of the other two trustees. But, um, I can double check.
That's who came on it. Um, Zachary, so, uh, trustee, uh, Baker commented that. They have been in touch with you at Metro Parks concerning this?
Yeah, correct.
What's, what's the?
So, to, so she, you know, at, at least to my knowledge, what the situation is. That the Hubbard trustees, you know, were gonna be the, do you know, Monica, do you know the. Hubbard trustees were gonna be the applicant, or the western reserve plant conservancy was gonna be the applicant, you know? Cause I'm not pretty to that kind of stuff, I'm.
Well. I, I believe based on the resolution, it says that we would be making application. And I believe that.
Is, it makes it, it's the only reason I'm asking. It makes a difference on what the commissioners would have to. Because if the land conservancy was the applicant. The commissioners and Hubbard trustees and Brookfield Township trustees would all have to pass resolutions. For them to be able to submit the application. If it is Hubbard trustees submitting the application. I believe you guys would only have to do a letter of support while they would have to pass the resolution.
That's what they're asking for, a letter of support.
Okay.
Right, and, and.
Well, my question is, is that premature? You know, should, you know, do you want the letter of support, or should we hold off on the letter of support? Should we make sure that Brookfield and Hubbard are both in agreement with this?
Well, it was suggested to trustee Tedrow that there be a meeting with not only Hubbard Township trustees, Brookfield Township trustees. Planning Commission, with Julie involved, um, and, and a couple of other players. Um, and so far, I haven't seen an email indicating that that has been.
So, right, so to answer my question, I'll be a little bit premature on this.
Well, there's, there's, I believe the deadline for the application is September first, but it, it.
What are you, what are you advising us to do? What would you like us to do?
She abstained from all of it.
I abstained from all of it. I have, I have too many.
I abstained, but, you know, do you? Do you like the letter of support from us, or would you want us to hold off on it? As one trustee.
Well, Commissioner Malloy, you had brought something up, and I, I think Commissioner Malloy can answer that. Well, prior to that support. Having a meeting with.
Right, and, and the landowner too. We were supposed to get some type of paperwork for the landowners, the group that owns the dam itself. In some form of agreement that they are. Interested in doing anything, and allowing the dam to be rebuilt, giving up ownership. You know, there's no, there was nothing we've seen yet that shows that any group's not gonna come in here, fix the dam, and then the guy goes and sells his whole chunk of property. Until we see an agreement. I brought that up, the, to trustee Tedrow when he was here. Show us the agreement with the landowner first, cause we may have. They may have a park behind it, they may have water behind it with no dam, there's no water, and there's no, there's nothing there. So I think it's premature. I think this is something that, if the trustees haven't voted collectively. I don't know if trustee Coletta signed off on this letter too, and they're making a request officially from the trustees, or is that a request from one trustee? To present to, to council, I, 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 I've got questions on that. I think it's half-baked so far, and not. That request.
Well, we don't want to say so, yeah.
Alright.
All we're doing is off, I mean, we're either offering support for it or against it. I mean, we, we don't have, we don't have anything to do with. Is that correct, Mr. Prosecutor?
Yeah, I mean, Bill Danso Prosecutor's Office, yeah, I mean, it sounds like right now perhaps what you're being asked for, and I haven't seen this. It sounds like maybe you're being asked for a letter of support, and that would be the extent of it at this point. Um, but what I would just tell the commissioners is it may be something that you do want to at least look at, and I think Commissioner Malloy brings up some good points that came up before. Uh, you know, even, was it a year, year and a half ago when this came up? That, you know, one thing to keep in mind is getting involved in this at all, you want to be sure what you're getting involved in, because. I haven't followed the litigation, but right now this dam was under a consent decree with the state of Ohio. Um, they considered it imminent risk of collapse, and they considered this, I can't remember what class level of dam this was. But essentially, a collapse of the dam would seriously endanger the property. There's a lot of liability involved in this matter. You know, I, I, again, it's, I, it's one thing, I guess, if you guys are just signing a letter of support to hopefully get some. Money to help fix this issue to, 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 but I, I think just before you get too deeply involved with. Signing letters, issuing letters, you know, you, we may want to really firm up what the status of that litigation is. Um, there was a, a requirement that frankly, I think had been missed the last time we talked about this, of lowering the water level. To make the dam safe, uh, safer, um, lessen the risk of collapse. And I'm not saying that there isn't a, a good thing trying to be done here by maybe saving the dam, saving the lake, but I, I think we have to be cognizant too of what the liability is. And the, the risk right now, what the status of that litigation is. Is this gonna be an, an effort again for the property owner to fix it up and then sell it with the county and the townships backing it? I don't know at this point. I don't know very much about where this is at presently.
I don't think anybody will.
I'm not exactly certain who, but I believe the level of the water is being managed to an extent.
Okay.
Um, I know I definitely have seen comments on Facebook that say, oh my gosh, the lake is so low, are they draining it? Um, and, and so.
They are lowering it.
So I'm not sure.
Periodically lowering.
Yeah, I'm not sure who is doing it, but I believe it is being done. Um, one of the, the biggest kind of sticking points. If it hasn't been replatted, so that the dam is separate.
Replanting.
That process can happen in the blink of an eye.
Julie.
Julie Green, yeah, Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning. Usually to get something of that magnitude and survey. Uh, given they let the very small number of surveyors around the region. I don't know if they're gonna be required to survey that entire acreage, which would be probably a six-month process, I'm guessing. And then it would come to the planning commission for approval or disapproval, and then it would go to Tax MAP, which is another.
Right.
You know, several week process, and then, yeah.
Multi-layered process involved and, and, but I don't know. Damn is, is.
But to your point, if, if, if either one is applying for these funds, I don't believe that they're gonna take any action that will cost money. Unless and until they receive the funds. So, you know, they can apply for the Clean Ohio funding, that doesn't necessarily mean they'll get funded. They probably will though, because they've been successful in the past. But another thing that you brought up.
The Land Conservancy.
Right, another thing you brought up was the appraisal price. Um, if they don't have a full appraisal to submit on September twelfth, it's less than a year old, I don't believe it would be able.
There's one in, in process, my, is my understanding.
Okay, good.
In, in, in an email of, these are the half dozen or so steps that are involved. It's under appraisal, it did say in process.
And they can use twenty-five percent of that appraised price as their match fund, you're correct. So. But, I mean, they're just applying for the funds right now, they're not really taking. And part of that scoring criteria involves getting letters of support, like Zach.
So, has anyone even talked to you at all about replating? No, nobody from Hubbard Township, Mr. Tedrow, nobody?
Not regarding this.
Cause they're talking about it being replatted and different people, we haven't even talked to planning commissioner about even starting that process, so.
Well, to be fair, Julie Green, like I said, I think that's a step that occurs after they receive the funding. So they're not going to take any action, so.
Has the land conservancy taken over any of the property yet, or they just looking at it, or is it actually signed over to them yet?
That would be part of the process, right?
So.
Yeah, uh, Zachary said, uh, Trumbull County Metro Parks. So with the Clean Ohio process, let me kind of explain a little bit of that, because I think it'll answer some of your questions. As in terms of process and where things are at, right? So they first come to a purchase agreement with the landowner, uh, before, um. You know, they can apply for any grants. Um, so they will apply for a grant, like Julie said, here in September. Uh, we will score the applications, I'm actually on the committee, we will score those in October. Um, they won't get an approved agreement until March of next year. So they really can't start any work until March of next year. Um, and then in that process, then they will start the, uh, split of the parcel, not now. Because they don't know if they've even been awarded, uh, the, uh, property. Either the land conservancy or Hubbard Township.
Even though they don't own it yet, they can apply for something that they don't own?
Correct, correct, because they're applying for the purchase of the property.
Well, you have to have a purchase agreement.
Yeah, it's gotta be an agreement or some letter, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, in order to qualify, Julie Green, in order to qualify to even get scoring, you do have to have like a letter of commitment, letter of interest. For a purchase, every contingent on getting funded. So yes, the current property owner will have to sign something. Before they can submit.
Cause what I was under very standing was this was a, a group, a venture capitalist group that owns it, they're in it to, they're in it to make money. They're not in it to lose money, and that was part of the hangup, we learned way back then was. These people knew they have a real property and they were gonna make money off of the lake. And, and have they changed their direction, and now they want to just get rid of it, they want to get out from under it, or that's, we need to see some. Some proof somewhere that they're not still trying to make money.
The dam.
I.
Where is the liability of the dam?
So again, to, to the trustees, uh, comments earlier. That it's going to the foundation, or Valley Foundation of.
Community Foundation of Western P A and Eastern.
They assume liability of the dam?
Yes, that is what I am understanding from the land conservancy.
I couldn't see that. I thought, I thought Paul O'Brien, I was just saying back then, when he got involved. I, I couldn't see them, they're a nonprofit group, to assume a dam that could, like you said, endanger lives. Doesn't sound to me like.
Oh, there's another, uh, uh. It's like a local baseball group.
Initially, that's when it was started, was, there was a local friends of ours, a group that was starting this, uh, that was the group that approached us at first.
Yeah, trustee that abstained from the.
Well, I, I don't think, I don't think we have to do anything right now, I mean, uh, trustee Tedrow, he, you know, he probably knows more. A lot about it, because he's been working on it now. But I, whether we give a letter of support or don't give a letter of support. They can either move ahead or not move ahead, they can do whatever they want to do. Our letter of support isn't gonna carry weight one way or the other, I would think, so. I, I think it's best that we just hold off on it.
It does, Julie Green, it does carry weight. It's part of the scoring mechanism for receiving Clean Ohio funds.
I, I'd like to see what we're supporting exactly, though. Right now, just say, we all support the dam being saved, we all support the public being able to fish and utilize the lake. But just cause we support that, doesn't mean we support the plan they have in action, and we need to see the plan first. To say we're gonna throw support behind something, there could be detrimental.
We have to make sure what the trustees are, want to do, not only, you know, Hubbard, but Brookfield and, and everybody before we can do this, and I think all those questions can be answered.
And then that's why. And then that's why I fear is, you know, I don't want the Metro Parks to fall preferably. Until it's at that point that we know it's safe and there's no like.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, we'll fall back and all of a sudden we have a, Metro Parks owns it now for a dollar and now we're gonna tear the dam down and pay a million dollars.
Correct, absolutely. So I, what I would ask the commissioners to do is. Either through, uh, trustee Tedro or through the Western Reserve Land Conservancy. Ask them for the plan that they have in place, cause they, I know they have a plan in place, just with all of your questions, you know, maybe ask. Trustee Tedro tomorrow to get that information from the land conservancy, it's like, I know they have all that stuff, it's just getting it written down to you. And I can always put a bug in there or when I leave here too, and I'll start putting that information together.
Okay, well, um, with that. We'll wait to see, I, I suppose. Trustee Tedro will be here tomorrow and he can be questioned about these.
Or at least inform us what's going on, what we need, I guess.
It'd be nice to have Brookfield give us some direction as to what they're thinking too. Cause without them, I don't know, without Brookfield signing off on it, what do they have, do they? What's, do they need, does Brookfield need to sign off?
Well, they get a hundred and thirty-six acres of three hundred and something, sounds like they.
Yeah, I'm not sure how the land conservancy built the application in the project. So I can't make that comment, so that would be something else they would probably need to address for you.
All right, I have a quick question. Julie or Zach, this is Beth Trumbull County Tourism. When's the next deadline for this? Is it a year or is it quarterly?
Right, it's yearly.
It's eight, so the next time they comply, they didn't have all the information, it'd be next year, correct?
And in the absence, I'm sorry, Mike Baker, Upper Township, um, in the absence of accomplishing anything this year. The consent decree, uh, I believe says that the land, that the, the dam will be breached in twenty twenty-six. Uh, and just FYI, I cannot be here tomorrow.
Do we know when twenty-six it's supposed to enter?
I don't.
So they went to court with the owners to have the dam, but the owners agreed to the breach, is that correct?
I think the judge.
Yeah, Bill Danso Prosecutor's Office, I, I have to check my, my file on this, but my recollection is that. The dam was actually supposed to be breached sometime twenty-four and they pushed back the deadline. I think based on an agreement, lower the water level at some point, there's been a lot of moving parts, but the. I, I think that the plan all along and the, the judge's entries all along basically said that that dam must be breached. Uh, unless it can be fixed and, and again, at this point, there's been nobody that's come forward with funds to actually repair it. So breaches, as far as I know, still the court's order now, whatever the timeline is, I'm not sure.
Now, I'll check today too, I have pretty good relations with Western Reserve Land Conservancy. I've opened them four people, signed the properties up with them, familiar with the board, and see if I can get them to get us something writing. From them on what they, actually they have in writing in regards to this and I. An hypothetical.
Okay.
And just one more thing, Julie Green, I spoke with Dave Justin Tedro, I think last year, even before he took office. Um, um, our office helped apply for FEMA funding. Where to be placed on the list for, um, technical assistance and I don't know if that was ever. Moved forward in the process or not, I never received any feedback, I assumed that they were turned down as well. We've applied for three FEMA grants this year and they rejected all three of them for our office, so. I'm assuming the same happened last year when Hubbard Township applied.
Uh, Mike Baker, Hubbard Township, um, I don't know if they were turned down. What, uh, trustee Tedro has said in public meetings is that. There's gonna freeze from this administration. And so, uh, maybe a, a difference without a, or. There's the distinction without a difference.
Thank you.
Julie, we're gonna move on to you.
Thanks Zach.
Yep, thank you.
With all that grant money.
Thanks.
Item eighteen, your authorized, uh, competitive bids for. Golden Triangle Structure Improvement Project, I'm very excited to announce this, Gary Shavers here, he's one of the Golden Triangle partners. We've been working on this with City of Warren and Howland Township for ten years. Not this particular grant, but in total, all of the improvements that we've been able to secure grant funding for as a team. Um, to improve that primary metal manufacturing cluster in Warren City and Howland Township. So it is going to be posted on the commissioner's website. I'm going to share it with your office, Gary, on your website, everybody's website, so we can get. Uh, the word out that this is officially out for bid starting this Friday. And that's approximately three million dollars that we were able to secure for various improvements. Gary knows the details on the engineering, it's officially designed part of it, he wants us to provide more details.
Yeah, I'll give a brief scope of the three different projects. Uh, contract day is Lurchmont Avenue intersection with Bronz and Overland, that's kinda the intersection. It's gonna replace the signal there, Deeds, um, due to stormwater improvements, curbs. And, uh, improve this railroad signal, uh, islands, better, um, convey traffic, truck traffic. Specifically through that area down Bronz into Leefan Two, High Metals. So it's gonna really through the connectivity down there for the industrial traffic. Uh, Bronz Road then subsequently gonna be improved, that's the township road. So Howland's Road's gonna be upgraded, um, uh, we'll build up pavements, we'll be knowing they're filling. Uh, about four inches on that, some other improvements along Bronz Road. And contract C is gonna be a Dana Avenue, uh, realignment, so that's gonna improve that, it's an offset. Intersection right now, so trucks have a difficult, um, right now, it's, it's an old intersection. Just wasn't designed, constructed to convey large trucks through that area. There's some industries that are still doing well down in that area, need to utilize that intersection, so this will move trucks. More efficiently through that intersection. So this is the three projects, uh, we're, we're gonna be managing ours. And assisting the township with construction of their project, and the city will be overseeing their project. Did you hear? Thank you.
And what? I skipped seven, so now I apologize. Julie Green, Plan Commission, item seventeen is an annual renewal of our citizen participation policy. Required element of our C V P program, it just outlines a complaint process. If there needs to be, you know, feedback and required public hearings that we hold for each of our.
Eighteen. Gary New Brown, San Antonio.
All right, Gary New Brown, San Antonio, Commissioner nine nineteen, they're discussing this here last few weeks, uh, Chuck Miller retirement. It'll be a pretty loss for. Uh, regarding the, uh. Uh, going to item twenty, uh, Brian Shawnee Brown. Five weeks ago, he hasn't decided to resign, uh, to find greater passengers. On item twenty-one. This is, uh, we awarded the State Line Road Sewer Projects, these tech builders. And once we reviewed the, uh, that's resolution, there was a error in there that we did. Uh, specify that we wanted that twenty-eight thousand nine hundred to come out of the A R P slap fund. Instead of just the A R P fund, so this is clarified. And, uh, twenty-eight nine, now the A R P slap fund, and I. All right, going to, I, item twenty-two, this is a slap contractor also, this was last phase two. And, uh. Emily came forward with us and let us know that another property in Lake Village qualified for. Uh, a house connection. And we had two contractors already active in this area. They were M J D contracting and Express Underground. And we got quotes from each of them. And, uh, the lower one was for, uh. M J D at ten thousand three seventy-five. This one's asking for a change worth, and added additional house up in the A K Lake area. And Bill, I forward this over to you too, do you see any problems?
No, I have no objection to that.
Okay, all right. Oh, okay, so the very last note, Express Underground, their cost was fifteen thousand six oh eight, they're quoting. We all proposed at the same time, so. So, M J D came in, I don't know, five thousand less than express on that, so we filled this up. A good price for this house. All right, let's move aside to twenty-three, and so notice the proceed for our Smith sewer, relative sewer project, and it goes to Express Underground. Um, got all the contract documents, uh, executed and we're ready to.
Questions, commissioners, any questions?
All right, thanks Chrissy for helping execute the execution of the contract document, she's been doing a great job down here.
Thank you, Chris. If you're not on that senior advisory.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, twenty-four, uh. To approve annual payment of twenty-five hundred dollars to the Trumbull County Family and Children First Council for fiscal year. Twenty twenty-six, uh, term July one to July thirty, Ju- July one twenty-five to July, June thirty twenty-six. Uh, Bonnie Wilson did reach out to us, I think Lisa, she sent this, right? Okay. This is, the commissioner is a yearly, I think, this is a yearly, uh, cemental. Okay. Um.
What's a four, it seems like a minimal, it's a minimal amount with four.
Yeah, it's.
Bonnie wrote a letter.
Yeah, Bonnie did write a letter and it's just for. See, find it, commissioner, I'll find it. Uh, I'll let you know, we're done with this meeting. Shelley's here?
Yep.
Shelley Blasch, this is.
Shelley Blasch, Job Family Services. Um, and the twenty-five is to adopt a resolution to designate August as Child Support Awareness Month. August is recognized as the National Child Support Awareness Month. A time to highlight the critical role that child support plays in the well-being of children and families. Uh, locally, our C S E A manages about sixteen thousand five hundred fifty-one cases. And they collect over twenty-six million eight hundred seventy-one thousand dollars annually. Um, and it is to ensure that our children in our community receive the support that they need.
Thank you, thank you, Shelley. Okay, twenty-six, we're under into executive session, I O R C one twenty-one twenty-one.
Nine, twenty-six to twenty-eight.
Oh, you're gonna omit all that?
You don't need it.
Okay, thank you for letting me know, Alex. Um, so we won't be going into executive session. Commissioner, to answer your question, I'm looking this up here. Uh, from Bonnie Wilson. This is the, uh, F C F C Annual Intributed Su- Support Request. Circling background following up on my previous email regarding financial support for a Trumbull County family. And Children First Council, your involvement and continued support play a vital role in helping us fulfill our mission. Um, and then she attached. I'm gonna forward this to you, okay?
That's fine. Um, for me to find out that Tedro went to, I checked through all my emails.
I'll, uh. I'll forward that to you as well.
It's lots of checking.
Okay, so, any comments from?
It pays a little better.
Commissioner, any questions? We have a, we do have a, um, groundbreaking ceremony at Mercy. Uh, for their, uh, emergency center here at one o'clock, which is good news. We have the meeting within sight, but that was. We haven't heard anything yet on that, any correspondence on that, no?
Hey, tomorrow, commissioner. Uh, Congressman Joyce will be here at one fifteen. He's gonna meet with us, uh, the commissioners until. Two fifteen. And he would like to meet any elected officials, any department heads, uh, in this room. Two fifteen to two thirty, anyone that has just a meet and greet type of thing, he's making his ways around the counties in his district. Um, he's gonna meet with us directly off, after, just to hear what our concerns are and our top priorities. And then when our meeting adjourns, he'd like to meet with any elected officials that have not met him or that have any concerns with him. Uh, and then when he's done with that, he's gonna take a tour around, uh, the county, cause we have a couple stops. Um, that we're gonna do here and, and outside of the city, uh, people that he wants to meet in the county, so. But that's tomorrow at two fifteen.
Doesn't he wanna meet the sheriff and tour the jail also?
Well, he said he wants, he will go to some places depending on his time constraint, how many people come here? And I thought, uh, if there's time, then we could show him the jail, if, uh, but he does want, there's a possibility he wants to see. Uh, maybe even the, the federal agencies and stuff on the Ag Center, things like that, so, let's see what his time constraint is.
Lisa, should, commissioner, should we have Lisa put out a memo or?
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to see if we can put out just that invite to department heads and other elected officials. The Congressman Joyce will be here two fifteen, Commissioner's room for a brief meet and greet, if they have any. Concerns or would like to attend to meet them, they, or, uh, a FaceTime with them, they can do that.
Next Wednesday, August twenty. Uh, what's going on with your schedules? Because I'm seeing something with Family Court Dedication at ten. And our meeting's at ten thirty, our regular meeting. And then at noon, Lake to River. Are you sure you're gonna be on a meal?
Yeah, Lake to River, Lake to River has their annual meeting with us at noon, we discussed that earlier today.
Right.
Family Court Dedication, I, I don't know anything about that.
It's a ten AM. What's the time factor? Ten to ten thirty?
I don't really know the details on that.
I think you're dedicated, uh, for, for former judge, Sandra R, but I think that's what I saw.
We were gonna go to that, we would have to maybe delay the meeting.
Well, hopefully not.
Do you have something new?
We'll discuss it. Meetings, meetings, meetings.
That's what we're here for.
A lot of meetings. Nobody ever sees it though. Commissioners just don't do much either. All right, well, that concludes this meeting if there's no other. Thing else?
Next, next week, next week I see on the schedule, there's, uh, the Workforce Board's annual meeting, Cafe four twenty-two, that's with Dimitri and his board. Uh, it's on Thursday morning at eight thirty. Um, any commissioner wanna go represent the board of commissioners at that? So, any like breakfast meetings?
We'll see. I thought we had something off next Thursday.
I thought we had something else next Thursday, but I'll look and see.
There's a smoke ribbon cutting ceremony at one.
Yeah, and Howland, that's another one.
And senior services meetings at eleven.
Okay. Need a motion, motion in New Jersey?
Second.
Sir Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Sir Hernandez?
Yes.